All right, we are live on Facebook and YouTube.
All right, welcome to the Carroll County Commissioners Meeting Monday, September twenty ninth, and like to go with one hundred and twenty five. Hi, the legislature is situated by the county attorney's attorney. It's Tuesday, we're talking about which was your name? One question. On the call, the municipal, what the representative? Hello, please.
Commissioner Madraski, here. Commissioner Mark, here. Commissioner Legar, here.
So, so, okay, just my clerk.
I would prefer char clerk certified that the entire recording of the proceedings of the prior meetings are captured completely and accurately in the electronic record and are available at the office.
Motion to approve the summary of forty minutes. So move.
I'll second.
All favor, I.
Hi, hi.
I have motion carried. Motion to approve the trial.
Move it, request. Second, second.
All favor, I. Hi, hi. Motion's carried. Motion to approve. So move it.
I'll second.
Any questions? To move it.
No, no.
All favor, I.
Hi, hi.
I have motion carried. The bill here, hundred eighty thousand, six, six, seven dollars. So, now we should pay the bills.
Move it. Second, second.
Any questions on those bills?
No.
All favor, I.
Hi, hi.
I have motion carried. Motion to. Prior.
Seven, seven. I'll second.
All favor, I.
Hi, hi.
I have motion carried. Likely by the law, all order about his work for the week of September twenty second, nine thousand twenty five, September twenty seventh, nine thousand twenty five, January sixth, November ninth, one adopted out, newly gained, zero weeks, highest, one side page through the license, one side page running. Motion to approve the cost allocation plan for fiscal year two thousand twenty five for use in two thousand twenty six prepared by Maximus U.S. Services Incorporated and authorizing to your president by an essay.
Move the proof of plan. Second.
Any discussions on this plan?
That's what I'm trying to do.
All favor, I.
Hi.
I have motion carried. You didn't like it.
He's very tedious.
Motion to approve change number number five of the U.S. Bridge for the harbor number CR four, page two point three nine project. The original contractor is involved, but this project was one million eight hundred fifty five thousand, two hundred sixty six dollars and sixty five cents. And then the debt contract amount of the change order has been decreased by three thousand fifty six dollars and eighty eight cents. Due to the quantity adjustment erosion control project used, the new contract after all changes, one million eight hundred sixty four dollars, five hundred sixty six cents.
Motion to approve the change order. And I'll.
Any discussion on the change order? All favor, I.
Hi.
I have motion carried. Moving along. Motion to approve permits for use of all in county right of ways as recommended by the county engineer. EOG Resources Incorporated for driveway to Augusta Township. Mallway Road for the Norris T W L. EOG Resources install a sixteen E P P pipe. The first conventional for in section seven of Augusta Township harbor. Norris T W L. EOG Resources Incorporated for driveway to Augusta Township harbor road for the Norris T W L. Number four, E O G Resource Incorporated driveway to Augusta Township harbor road for the Norris T W L. Number five, charge check for directional board, all fiber, eighty or section fifteen of Augusta Township and Door Road. Number six is charge check for directional board, all fiber, occupied in section fourteen, fifteen, twenty three, and twenty four of Augusta Township Roar Road. And number seven is frontier communication to replace a rock in transfer, transfer facility, section six from Roar Township Harbor. All motion? Move to approve the permit change presented.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
No.
All favor, I.
Hi.
I have motion's carried. We're gonna do these, we'll do this after.
Yeah.
Let's do it. All right, at this time, um, we have, uh, multiple several people here for awareness, uh.
This autonomia.
This autonomia, we practice it very good. Um, we want to get everybody that's here for this, just to give us your name.
Let me turn the camera around so folks can see what we're doing here. I don't catch anybody, I don't think, but. Okay.
Darcy Bull Lance.
Brian Bull Lance.
All right, Bull Lance.
Michaela Wendell.
Daniels.
Choice Yes.
If that could, if you get any. Any one of that groupers.
Oh, okay. Anybody else here for the disautonomia over here? Okay.
All right, so we're gonna have a proclamation that, uh.
Darcy's gonna be the proclamation.
Well, Lisa wants to just say it a little.
Okay.
For the first time ever, so.
Yeah.
Yay.
We've been coming here for several years now to do the proclamation for disautonomia awareness month. And since then, our community has doubled in size. This autonomia isn't a rare condition, and despite affecting over six million Americans alone, it's almost unheard of. But every year, we're meeting more and more people who are getting diagnosed. When I was first diagnosed by the Cleveland Clinic in two thousand and fourteen, they didn't have a dedicated POTS clinic to treat patients like me. Now, in two thousand and twenty five, they do, but they cannot keep up with the influx of patients needing treatment. And that's because POTS can be brought on by viral infections. And COVID nineteen is the one that has infected so many people in the past five years. There aren't enough specialists who understand this condition. And there's not enough people out there who know what disautonomia is to be able to identify it in themselves or their loved ones. We can only hope that we're raising awareness in our local community that we're able to educate others to know what disautonomia is. So they won't have to suffer for years undiagnosed like many of us do. So, we're here to ask you to proclaim October as Disautonomia Awareness Month in Carroll County. And to once again light up the bell tower blue for disautonomia and support us in bringing awareness to this condition. We also received the state proclamation as well. Thank you.
Whereas disautonomia is a group of medical conditions that result in a malfunction of the autonomic nervous system, which is responsible for automatic bodily functions such as respiration, heart rate, blood pressure, digestion, temperature control, and more. Where some forms of disautonomia are considered rare diseases such as MSA, pure autonomic failure, while other forms of disautonomia are common impacting millions of people in the U.S. and around the world. Such as diabetic autonomic neuropathy, neuro, neurocardogenic syncope, and postural orthostatic tachycardia syndrome. Whereas disautonomia impacts people of any age, gender, race, background, including individuals living in Carroll County. Where some forms of disautonomia can be very disabling, and this disability can result in a social isolation, stress on the families of those impacted, and financial hardship. Where some forms of disautonomia can result in death, causing tremendous pain and suffering for those impacted of their loved ones. Whereas increased awareness about disautonomia will help patients get diagnosed and treated earlier, save lives, and foster support for individuals and families coping with disautonomia in our community. Whereas advocates on behalf of patients living with disautonomia encourage communities to celebrate disautonomia awareness month each October around the world. Whereas we seek to recognize the contributions of a professional medical community, patients and family members who are working to educate our citizens area about disautonomia in Carroll County.
Now, therefore, we, Christopher Madraski, Robert Workford, Donald E. Ladies, uh, commissioners of Carroll County, do hereby proclaim the month of October through, throughout Carroll County as Disautonomia. We're good enough.
That was fair.
Awareness month. And like to make a motion to adopt this proclamation for October as Disautonomia Awareness Month in Carroll County. In the form of a motion.
So move. I'll second.
All favor, I.
Hi.
I have motion's been carried.
Any idea how many suffer in Carroll County from this?
Just that I personally know, I'm gonna go with around twenty five, but, you know, every year between now and next year when we do this again. I usually get in contact with between five and ten more patients, give or take, you know, and it's in their trial period if they're really getting di, you know, they've been diagnosed with that or something else, but, um. I, you know, it's something that I just keep seeing.
Sure.
Yeah.
And then, you were first diagnosed, they didn't have a center at Cleveland Clinic?
No, they did not have any POTS clinic.
Any idea how many are involved in that now?
They have shut it down to, when, um, they have shut it down to only the state of Ohio, and then they shut, shut it down to, they're not acceptable, they're overwhelmed. Because we transferred her from out of Arizona, from Mayo Clinic back to Cleveland Clinic, and it was a fight for me to get her in, but, you know me, so, we managed. Yeah, but they, it was because they had shut down, they were like, we are just overwhelmed, we cannot take any new patients, not even in the state of Ohio. But, and that's how we learned all that, that information, yeah. So, you know, doctors are, you know, we have a few, there's less than sixty-five board certified autonomic specialists in the United States of America. So, you try to take millions of people in the United States and get sixty doctors who actually know about this and see what their waitlist is like. And these patients are waiting for years, and they're suffering, and, you know, and we do this for, you know, local professionals to, um, hopefully help, you know, patients in our area. And, you know, so they don't suffer for years. Yeah.
How many, how many certified physicians are in Ohio?
The, the only one that I know that is autonomically certified is Dr. Shimali at the University of, um, Hospital and Dr. Blair Grubin in Toledo.
Very rare.
Yeah. Yeah. And both of those, um, even the doctor that we're seeing at Cleveland Clinic, he's not a board certified autonomic neurologist, he's just really gotten smart and really, and he's starting to teach that Case Western over this too, so, yeah. Yeah.
Hopefully that helps teaching.
Yep. Yep. But we have to keep doing awareness and teaching, educating.
So there's medications for different.
Yeah, POTS is, um, that's one of the disautonomia that we, we spend a lot of time raising awareness. It can be caused by so many things, concussions, the NFL, pregnancy, surgeries, um, autoimmune, autoimmune diseases, uh, infect viral infections. So, you know, it's really, you know, what causes the POTS, and, and then you have to figure out that and then get that under control for the POTS to get under control. So unless you meet the two, you're never gonna get one under control, you know, and, and POTS is a spectrum, and I don't think people understand that either. You can have somebody who has POTS and function pretty good and go out throughout, live throughout the day and do many things, and then you have people on the severe side of things. Um, and that's unfortunately our case, and that's what exactly Cleveland Clinic told us in two thousand and fourteen that our daughter had a severe case of POTS, one that they hadn't seen in a long time like that, and, um. And her, her body has shown us that in the last decade that, you know, you're dealing with a severe case, yeah.
All right, anybody else wish to speak, uh?
McDever, do you have anything to say?
I'm not feeling very well today, so.
We understand that.
That's for you.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for coming, even though you're not feeling well.
Can we do a picture, or is it too much with everybody?
Yeah.
We can certainly attempt it.
And then we'll get out of here, so you guys, if it's too much, we won't add.
Think we can probably stick you guys right behind. If the listener is there. Yeah, I'll use a door.
All right, guys, there we go. And that stands the bird.
Anybody close their eyes? Let me get them for Facebook page here.
Thank you.
Those investments that, if you guys don't wanna stay for the whole thing, you can probably just sit out right here. Have a good day, guys. Come in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good one, man.
Yep. Ready to move on?
I am.
All right, so at this time, uh, we'll turn it over to Commissioner Madraski, um, he's the one who's been dealing with Thrasher in the Health Department, so, let you have a few orders.
Well, we're talking about Stony Lake down in, uh, Perry Township, so, uh, I think Kelly and Bill was gonna be probably the main speakers.
And Bill's gonna be the main speaker. I'm gonna turn that.
And get psyched up.
Yeah.
We circled all the way around, Bill, it's up to you now.
When the state is here, he let them take over.
Oh, yeah, sure. I'm in your house. So, thanks for having us, um. As was discussed, Stony Lake has some issues with wastewater treatment, which has resulted in contamination of drinking water wells for folks. And in our world, we don't like to see that. The process for, uh, complying with Ohio rules, the Health Department needs to formally request, in our case, the Ohio EPA's involvement through the way the revised code is set up. A nuisance was declared by the Health District, Ohio EPA received that nuisance, and our response is a formal agreement, which is the findings and orders that you have received. That's our process. The findings and orders require two things. One is that within one year, which we're probably already at the point they could be submitted, a general plan, which is, this is our idea of what we wanna do. That gets submitted and, uh, formally approved by Ohio EPA. Following that, within two years, we wanna see a permit to build your wastewater collection and treatment system and it being implemented. Those are the, the two requirements that we have in findings and orders. And once, once those are signed, then we'll begin the process. Ohio EPA does have the ability to offer financial assistance, we've had and met with our financial folks. I think once this is signed, we'll have another formal meeting to kind of understand where things are and then get this moving forward. But we've been working on it for a few years, so it's. I'm signing it, but that's our preference, um, sooner than later, so we can begin working through to address this, uh, health issue.
Do you, Kelly, you have anything to add, or?
No, just that this is part of the formal process so that we can finish the design work, which is why Thrasher is here, um, as the engineering firm, and, um, be able to get these, the sewer plant, um, built. And be able to get the residents of Stony Lake tied into that as well as Boash Lake.
Are there any residents from Stony Lake here? Yes, sir, okay, and you? And you, okay, all right, are you guys, uh, permanent residents?
There are, so, I'll introduce, I'm Brad Smith, I'm the current president-elect of the, uh.
Oh.
Stock, Stockloos Association. Frank Sherrill's here with me, who's the, me, past president, the current president's unavailable this morning. Um, there are, what are there, three permanent residents at the lake? Uh, none of the, none of the three who's here are, uh, permanent residents, so.
Okay.
And, gonna get a very few, uh, permanent residents there.
Part of my understanding with the process is we're gonna need to find a place to have, have the plant located. Uh, that's on association property, or that's on somebody else probably would have to buy. I'm not sure what that looks like, but that is something that would have to happen, uh, as part of the process, and we'll get to that, but, uh, just so you guys are aware, that's. It is gonna be some sort of a small plant that would have to be there. Um, we originally, as you are aware, we've tackled, we tried to tackle this a while ago now, um, trying to, to make it. Uh, feasible for the landowners, property owners there, uh, as well as on the, the plant itself, because with it only being three or four permanent homes. There's not a whole lot of flow that goes through a sanitary sewer project in the, in the off time, so we were trying to find if we could connect to a couple other allotments around, around, close to your property. Uh, and investigating the size that we would need for that and the cost for that, and then trying to go after some money on our own. Uh, which led to a big roundtable meeting that led to filing with the state EPA, uh, so we could gain access to their money, so we like. Um, so that's kind of the process of where, where, where I, my understanding of it, and if Kelly's got something different to say, or, or staff, but it looks like the next thing that we need to do is. Sign the findings with EPA, and then that will access Thrasher to, uh. I think they've already even got a plan, mostly in place, already all in place.
Probably.
Yeah. And then that will access some more money from the state, is what I understand correctly.
Well, that, yes.
Are there, YouTube have any questions?
Um, good, well.
Well, I was just wondering, do the, uh, residents have anything more to?
I have a, so, one, I'm, I'm curious, so, and I, and I spoke with Kelly about this, and my understanding is that everybody's quite confident the state is going to come through with a bunch of money. What if the state does not? Essentially, the plans would, would oppose Stony Lake, most of the people there have part-time cottages, they're there a couple weekends a year, uh, most of them are very simp, simple. And I don't know that there's going to be any ability, it's only about flooding property that he's at the lake. I don't know if there's any ability for people to pay for that kind of system during assessments, uh, it just won't happen. And I don't know how much commissioners and you have really thought about that aspect of things. I did then have one other comment, I don't mean to suggest, I don't think it was any intent intentionally to mislead or anything, but I just wanted to focus, and maybe I'm mistaken here too, but I get concerned about, uh, uh, precision in language, because I'm trained as a lawyer. And, uh, the comment was made that the problem has resulted in contaminated wells, and I don't think there's any evidence we've seen that the wells that were contaminated, samples taken about five years ago. Which I think there's some dispute as to how good those samples were, and they've not been repeated, I just don't think there's evidence to show that this has resulted, that there's been that cause and effect relationship there. And, uh, just for purposes of having a record, I think it's worth to, worth it to note that that fact should become all that some of.
I think the contaminated wells is what brought this to our attention when there were real estate transactions. Um, but the bigger issue is the, the dry wells, um, that are in that area, and the potential that that is contaminating the drinking water of the state.
Right, and, and, and I understand that, I think, you know, that, I understand, I just, like I said, I just don't think that at this point we have any reason. Um, I say have reason to believe, I don't think we have any proof that there's, again, that cause and effect that was implied, and again, I'm suggesting Bill was potentially trying to mislead anybody who's saying, walking like a normal person talks, but I'm not a normal person, I'm a lawyer, so I wanna be more precise on that, just to note that we would contest that, uh, would have become relevant, so.
And, and, sorry, just to add, we've had several of the members that were tested in that very small sample. That came up with some bacteria, who then had their wells professionally cleaned, and they were by the same lab, and they were cleared. So that led us to say, wait a minute, you know, number one, we have a lot of part-time residents and part-time cottages that don't understand process of how to continue to keep their wells clean. That's something we've educated our teams on, our, our folks on, but it also suggests that maybe the conclusion that was jumped to is that, oh, we've got the major problem down here, it might not be necessarily the case. Uh, because not everybody that got a bad sample went through the process of cleaning their, and, and sanitizing their wells and doing the proper maintenance on their wells, some just was like, they don't know what they're talking about, whatever. Um, either way, because it was a small sample to start with, and then just under fifty percent, maybe thirty-five percent of that small sample was able to flip it after proper, we were left with, wait a minute, so. You know, the conclusion, I think, from the conversation with the Health Department was, doesn't matter what those samples say, it's a matter of the fact you have old wells. Okay? And that's a little different from what Bill had said, that it was wastewater problems affecting drinking water, so that's what.
So, for clarity, I keep hearing it was a small sample, and we learned what the number of wells were that were tested.
I, I don't have the file in front of me to say the exact number, um, but I do know that it was like sixty-seven percent of the wells, water wells at the time that were tested were either had E. coli or E. coliiform. Which is what led us to looking at, is the sewage, because E. coli and E. coliiform are the leading causes of contamination. Um, there were also a lot of things going on during that time, the lake was drained, um, you know, there could be other contributing factors that, but the bottom line is that. When looking at the sewage treatment systems that were put in during that time, the majority of those are no longer allowed to be permitted. That the state of Ohio has, and if we've identified that it's causing a public health nuisance, then we're obligated to fix it.
And we're talking about two different places, Stony Lake and Boash, so.
Boash has the same type of sewage treatment systems, um.
So, the wells were more at Stony or?
So the wells were more at Stony or more at Boash?
The wells that we found were at Stony Lake, um. We have had some at Boash, but Boash had its own issue because they were sharing water wells. Um and that's not permitted through the Ohio EPA either, so um. But because of the type of septic systems that were put into both of these communities. It makes sense to build the wastewater treatment plant to connect both of those. Um and as we talked at at the meeting. You know, this is not just isolated to Stony Lake and Boash Lake, there's probably thirty that we know of currently. Um where there are dry wells across the county, and we are working with the. Ohio EPA to help develop a plan for Carroll County of. How can we address these, rather than like what we're doing right now is addressing them as we identify the problems. But can we proactively um look at solutions and where things could be tied in? Uh that are most feasible across the county.
And so this whole issue uh rose to the surface due to uh some sort of real estate transactions.
Yes, so it's required that if there's a real estate transaction, that the septic systems have to be inspected. Um and the water wells are not required, but are often required by the loan lending institutions. So we don't require that as part of our point of sale, that is a local um. Policy by the Board of Health, um but the. The waters were tested as part of the septic inspections. You know, five years ago, whatever, however many years ago that was. I do want to clarify the, I think it might be confusing, the dry well. That we're referring to is either a dry well or a leach well, that is the leaching component of the septic system. That is completely separate than the water well. So I know those terms kind of get confusing because they both say well.
We're not really worried about the water well.
We are not worried about the water wells, no. In this instance, the the Ohio Department of Health has.
Strictly talking about the sewage.
Those type of systems as illegal technology contaminating waters of the state and they have to be replaced.
So what happened with those transactions or attempted transactions? Were they stalled?
We don't stop the point of sale transactions, we just determine, it's the same as if there was a house inspection. Um and there was an issue with the roof, we don't. The inspector that's inspecting the house and says that your roof needs replaced, just puts that into the report and the transactions. Are up to the buyer and seller then to negotiate. You know, what is going on, we have tried to put. To uh inform people as they're buying down there that we're looking at putting in a sewer plant and we're really encouraging. That we're not going to permit new sewers to be put in down there, um so we're looking at temporary solutions. If we notice that there is a failing septic system. Doesn't make sense for somebody to have to put in this new septic system if. They're gonna eventually have to tie into a sewage treatment facility.
Tell your holding tanks flooded in this case, without.
Yeah, on a case-by-case situation, this with. A lot of stipulations, because we need to make sure that they're alarmed, so people know when to pump them.
Does this prevent a sale from like uh a lending company? They, would they say, no, we can't?
We have had some that we've written letters to the lending institution and then that has sufficed.
But so when you say you wrote a letter to the lending institution, was that letter um. Designed to take and uh prevent the sale or help us then?
No, to help the sale, but the lending institution, you know, when they find out what's going on. They're saying, you know, normally. You have to have the new septic system and especially like FFA loans, they want the whole system in. Um or a VA loan, they want it to be completely installed before they'll actually provide the money. Um but we have been able to work with those lending institutions to say, you know. Temporarily, here's what they're going to do with their sewage until. Um the plant is constructed and then that will alleviate the failing septic system.
So the last question I have then is this. Um if we approve today's proceedings. And the money does not materialize out of the EPA, then where we have to.
Well, we, I mean, I don't know that the EPA is going to pay for it completely anyways. I don't mean that they have that much money to pay or that they're willing to contribute, am I wrong in that?
So the way the agency typically works is. There, we we loan out money, our interest rates are way less than what you would get from any financial institution. As part of that, there is the ability to ask for something called principal forgiveness. Which is basically free money, and you're welcome to do that, that's based on economic need. And so I think once we have a general plan. That is approved, so we have the idea of what what is gonna go on, so this is what you want to do. Now we have something to go to our financial um division. And say, this is what's planned, we'll begin working with them right away and. See what options they have for us, because there's, there's both money for planning, which is a separate pot of money. And then there's money for the actual construction, so I think. At at that point, we we kind of work our way through step by step and see what. One may lead to other options too.
And does this, do you know if this money is? Like s- slated for low income? I mean, we're we're talking about a residency here that's got forty-some properties and one, three of them are permanent. So you know, the rest, the thirty-six, thirty-seven of them are. It's a, it's a vacation cabin essentially, or recreational cabin, or not a permanent place, is that, does that matter to the EPA?
We'll have to work through that one.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, ultimately, we we want the same thing as everyone here wants. The the ability to safely create wastewater, not result with any water problems, so I think. We'll we'll work within our rules and to the best way we can achieve that.
Okay, a- and I guess to answer more of your question. What the EPA won't cover will will certainly, essentially, will work with Omega to find other kinds of grains. That that help burden that cost.
So the last.
Which they're already involved in.
Are we going down a road where if funding becomes unavailable, we're locked stepped into this?
I don't think so, uh we're we're, we're all obligated to make sure everything is up to code. But if if this does not pan out as an option. We will explore what our other options are, so I I think that's part of the process is. Abating the nuisance is where we're all going. There is a preferred option, which is the standard way we do these things, which is sewer collection, sewer treatment, because there's economy of scale in doing that. Um if that, for whatever reason, is not able to happen, we we will all be. We're not going away, so we'll all be together, we'll know what's going on and we'll find other options. But they're probably not the desirable ones.
So when you say three to four full-time residents, that's at the Boash Lake side of their step. I guess Boash has quite a few full-time.
Uh can I say something? I'm I'm a resident, so I like, uh I'd just like to address. Some of the issues that have come up here and tell you about what what my per- my, this personal experience of myself and my wife have been over a lot of years. We're not permanent residents, but we do, our our place is year-round, uh we do use it year-round, so. Uh there are probably other people in our position as well, we don't, it's not our primary address, but we do use it year-round, so we're in a similar position as as a year-round resident. For example, and I can just walk you through the process we went through, uh because it relates to some of the issues that have come up here, we we've had our place. About three and a half years now, almost four years now. Um and it initially failed inspections for both the water well and the septic system. Uh the previous owner um was able to address. I use the word system loosely, because it's not really a system, there were, there there was a pipe from the basement leading to a couple of hole-in-tanks. Uh the pipe was old, the system itself is probably original to the cabin, about eighty years old or so, which is, which is not unusual around Stony Lake. Uh they were able to put a newer pipe in or repair it somehow. And uh during that process, I learned that the the septic system is just a couple of tanks. The 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 flow goes from the cottage to one tank and somehow gets to the second tank, they're very small tanks. Uh we have them emptied once or twice a year, uh and we tend to be very diligent about that. Uh but that is unlike many of the other people around the lake, and some some people aren't even aware that these so-called systems require maintenance. And and that is no doubt part of the problem. Um the well, that was the septic system, uh and it's completely inadequate for our needs going forward, completely inadequate. Um our water well was contaminated, the previous owner was, tried to shop it and bring it into compliance, was unable to do that. For whatever reason, uh we went through the expense of actually digging, uh putting in a new well. I had to go a hundred and twenty feet deep to get to the water. Um uh as a good source, and we had to, we, part of the problems around Stony Lake is that be- because these things are so old. The existing well was only thirty or forty feet deep, and it was close to the lake, and which which makes it easy to get contaminated and. So we chose, rather than trying to fix a well that was, that was fifty feet from the water. And only thirty or forty feet deep, we went further up the road, close to the road, far as we can go, and still be on our property. And went down a hundred and twenty feet, and we're pretty confident that we now have relatively safe water, most people are not going to. Be willing to go through the time or expense to sink a new well, uh be, in part because. Uh that that is not, it's not a primary residence. The um um. We're at a point where although this so-called septic system of ours is functioning, it's completely inadequate for our future needs. And we would either have to put in um a completely new system, assuming we could do it. Somehow, because we're not going to put it where the co- current system is, because it's forty feet from the lake, I don't I don't believe current EPA rates. Allow for systems that close to body of water. These lots are narrow, they're deep, they're, but they're narrow. We'd have to try to find a place for it, someplace closer to the road if we can. Uh and then we'd probably have to put some kind of grinder pump down there, and it would be a huge expense, I mean, I've gotten some rough estimates, twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars. Which I really don't want to spend all upfront, uh. My neighbor Brad Smith referred to assessments for the public system, personally, I'd rather pay the money over a period of twenty or thirty years than all, all. Upfront, I mean, it just makes, just common sense to me, and with the public system, uh. I don't have to replace it again twenty or thirty years from now, it's 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 permanent. Um so in my mind, my wife and I strongly support. Uh a a a a a public source system, we think it's necessary, we don't think. Given the the mindset of some of the people around Stony Lake and Boash, which we also looked, we looked at some properties of Boash before we bought at Stony Lake. Uh the mindset of the people there is is not to upgrade these systems, uh I I just don't see it happen. We we we're in a minority, we're kind of a rare bird in that in that respect. I don't think it's gonna happen, uh we want to be able to use the lake and enjoy it for 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 ourselves and ideally. Children, grandchildren down the road, we bought it as a family property that we wanted, that we helped have in the family for many years. We're taking a long-term perspective on this, and to us, a public source system, it ju- just makes the most sense and. I have yet to hear any cogent reasons from any uh any of my neighbors who opposed, I mean. A number of them do, probably a majority of them do, to be honest, and I, when I asked them why, I I have yet to hear an articulable reason for that position. So um a- apart from the cost issue, which I've already addressed, that that I understand. Uh uh but you know, uh if if people are are faced with a situation of having to spend twenty-five dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars on a new system. Or or pay incrementally over the next twenty years, my choice is to pay incrementally for the next twenty years, it just makes more sense to me. Um apart from that, though, I have not heard any other cogent reasons, I mean, I just, I just don't understand, but that's my perspective. Um I want to let you, I want to make you aware that there are people like me around around there who feel this way. Um but I'm not on the board, I'm not an officer, my neighbors Brad and Frank are are on the board. But I just wanted to give you a uh my perspective on this, and I'm happy to answer any questions you want.
Well, we thank you for that perspective.
You got the floor.
Yeah, so I have a cogent reason. Anthony's system is an outlier, we have a couple of them that are like that, that are from originals. The owners of that cottage previous to him, actually several, three, four owners previous to him, didn't do a whole lot to that system that was. An absolutely original, and that's one of the, that system there, that particular system there probably existed. Three or four or five of these places, and they are of no question need to have some type of modern upgrade of some kind. However, they are outliers, that's not what the average system or situation is. So for those of us that don't have that situation, that's a reason why our systems function properly, our wells are clean. Um et cetera. And that's the reason why we're not interested, or uh would really be uh interested in alternatives to help them. Anthony and others, there's, again, there's. There's fifteen percent, that would be four to six of the. Locations down there that need, and his is one for sure, that would like that, that need some type of a system. Also, from prior, um we need to revisit the percent of cottages that were sampled, because sixty-seven percent is not the correct number. It was uh. We had a few cottages that turned over real estate transactions. Some of them were of the older variety that hadn't been used or opened in a long time, and so they came up. In poor and testing, that led to a, hey, can we get anybody else that is willing to participate in a. Water sample test. It was the fall of that year, which many of our cottages are seasonal, so therefore there was only a few people available, I think there might have been. Fifteen, somewhere between fifteen and twenty, tops, which um would be. Potentially up to fifty percent of the cottages, but I don't know exactly what the numbers, but there was no more than that, and of those. About sixty percent of those samples, so now we're talking about ten to twelve samples. Of the fifty percent that were taken, if if approaching fifty percent came up to be um. Where they had issues, like I said earlier, when I stated that of those ten, let's say ten to twelve. At least three or four took the steps to have their wells cleaned. It's not like the others did and still couldn't come up with a sample, those were the ones that did, got their wells cleared, it wasn't that the. Contractor that did the cleaning had to do unreasonable things to get there. Just a simple professional cleaning that hadn't had not been done at most of these maybe ever, or certainly in time, so. One of our steps in the beginning, considering that there's a lot of money involved here, what happens if the money doesn't come through? What if the county is short money, what if we? I mean, we're already saying that we got a financial hardship that might have to qualify, we might get into the fact that. The EPA has some, it's not enough, Carroll County has some, it's not enough, that leaves us with whatever. Um we wanted to make sure that we were absolutely, without question. Um in the in need of this, and our argument. Five years ago, when we went to a health department meeting then, at the health department building. Was that the sample size that's taken initially was not large enough, nor potentially correctly done. Based on our. Well contractor that cleaned the well, said that sample they took, that even, it was not done correctly. So we said, hey, listen, let's get a more sweeping and professional sample done. To confirm that we have a vast majority of these cottages that are in trouble. That was never done. And then time went by, nothing was done, then it, this problem has now bubbled back up, and here we are, so I think we made some like leap to. To a, to a um. Conclusion that potentially um might not be right, maybe it's fair, you know, I I. I I think with, it it's a, for as residents, we almost feel like. The county sees this as, hey, here's an opportunity for us to take advantage of state program and get some money and get this thing done, and wouldn't this be great? The county sees this as, hey, here's an opportunity for us to take advantage of state program and get some money and get this thing done and wouldn't this be great and everything else? And it's like, hey, um, that might be. But we're talking about affecting this community that, you know, may or may not. Um, ultimately be able to do it, as Brad mentioned earlier with the shut, if, if there's any kind of substantial. Money here, uh, we don't even know, this could be, end up being, we just saw a change order earlier for a bridge. This could end up being something really, really super expensive, maybe prohibitive if it's gone through. It might really fall on the residents in a long way. Also, what Bill mentioned was that if this doesn't work, which was the primary alternative we'd like to see work. We'll pursue some other alternatives, we've been kinda open to, I mean, I don't know what the right, um. Timeframe is on this or what the right order of things are is alternatives, we have. Probably half as many people who got bad tests have replaced their septic systems or their systems in the last years. Which was approved by the health department at the time, they're very, they were expensive, these folks put them in. I recognize that that's one style, that maybe not everybody has the right situation for that, but there are others, we've researched other. Styles that are acceptable, that are alternatives. Where necessary, as opposed to locking the whole. Multiple communities into this very expensive situation that. Um, you know, we feel like maybe there's some test cases where something needs to be done, fair enough, but. Across all of it, I'm not sure. So. Throw that on that record, I guess.
If I can add, I'm trying to be quick, so, the first, um. While I'm thinking about it, I wanna thank Tina Kelly, who've been very generous with her time and very helpful, appreciate their involvement on this. Um, and my understanding, uh, from, uh, Kelly and Tina is that essentially this is sort of a. Matter of strict liability, in other words, it's not a question of whether there's. Whether there's an actual proof of contamination, not simply that these. The types of systems that many people at Stony Lake have are now prohibited. Uh, can't be licensed and they need to be, they're not grand, there's no grandfathering in or, or that, I said basically correct. Um, and also a belief that in most of these situations, although I don't, they've been examined on an individualized basis. But in most of these situations, people would find it very difficult to correct them because of the contours of the land and the lot sizes, so. Uh, I guess my, my point here is that. I don't know if there's any provision, and I don't know if Bill knows or Kelly knows, or, but if there's, you know, provisions for. Uh, anything in the statute that allows for discretion or waivers or waivers of some requirements on upgrading systems. We have people now who are asking to upgrade their systems and they haven't been approved by the county, uh, to do that. And so, you know, again, thinking, uh, going forward, especially if the money does not come through from the state. And again, I don't know, county budgeting and so on, that's, that's your guys' domain, but if this becomes an issue. You, you know, I'd like people to at least be thinking what other kinds of alternatives are there, again, it's a small community. Uh, most of the people, uh, do not live here year-round, not residents i- in that sense of the county. And maybe they can just be dispensed with, but I think that would be. You know, unfortunate, and I think, uh, a lot of people have actually spent to, to upgrade their systems there and. I think it would be very, you know, disappointing if we can explore all options before steps that might end up in taking it, but essentially make these. Places economically unviable and make, and therefore make the entire lake association. So again, I thank you folks for your time this morning, for the time you put in, again, I want to thank the staff, uh, which has been very generous in their time over the last couple minutes.
So Chris, um, you've been, um, engaging in this project from the beginning of the week and. If we move forward, we're not obligated to, um. Complete this project. If we get to the point where it does not look economically viable.
That's what it sounded like Bill just said.
Yeah, I'll just, our, our orders, ones that we'll hopefully sign. Are not prescriptive. So they do not state that central sewer is required. Right, they, they say submit the general plan. What we do know, cause this is not the first time we've had this situation, is when you have dry wells. That are just disposing of sewage right into the ground and you have shallow wells, it's a recycling effect. And that's what our concerns are, that's why these things are not allowed anymore. You couple that with small lot sizes, meaning you don't have adequate space to replace the tile fill, that's why. If you have tile fills, you say normally a three acre lot, because I need to have adequate space when this fails. Those are the limitations that we're seeing here. Um, so it's not that there are. Other options that would work, there, we would all work through that, but it's. Going to, how do you evade a problem, how do we deal with future issues? Most wells are probably not a hundred and twenty feet deep, so now you are getting that cycling effect of wastewater and wells. You clean a well, that, that does eliminate that immediate bacteria, but if you have a septic well. That's thirty feet from your drinking water well, it's gonna get recontaminated, it's just that time. That moment, it's the technology is, if, we, we know that's gonna happen, so it's, how do we address that? The general plan's gonna be something we'll all work together to come up with answers. And it's gonna have, in the end, the way they work, uh, these are all the things we looked at, and this is the preferred option. We have a year to get there, we'll start exploring the financial stuff, once we get orders signed. And we're all committed to, to fix the problem, not saying what we're committing to. Then we'll start meeting with our, our fiscal folks in Columbus, we'll have a general plan. We'll flesh out those options to answer your questions of financials, you know, if. If this is available, what's the success? We have the money to loan out, it's just will it meet your needs and that, that I don't know the answer to. But viscerally, our loan fund is able to fund these things. So that, that's not an issue, it's, will the interest rates and then the individual cost, the homeowners and the county. But we'll work through that.
The, the other piece that I would just like to add to this is that. It's not just the water wells and. That are being, that initially were contaminated and I agree that they probably are going to continue to be contaminated if. The sewage is still getting into the water source. It's also the downstream effect of this, it's because of the topography and the rock. That is there, the bedrock that is in Stony Lake. When sewage hits that bedrock and water gets to it, where does it go? It's, we've seen it, it goes straight downstream and downstream is affecting not just the residents at Stony Lake, which is why. Public health is saying it's a public health nuisance, it's affecting other people in our community and other water sources in our community. And we know the recreation that happens at least in the lake, we need to protect that lake. And that's part of what, you know, EPA's mission is, is to protect the waterways of the state. So, I, I know that it feels very much like we're, um. Going after everybody that are residents of Stony Lake, but it's really a bigger. Um, problem that we as public health have to address in our community.
So I guess we have an issue, if it's gonna come back to the landowners' costs, it's going back to the county for costs. We do have a problem, it's not gonna go away.
I just, just have one, one follow-up thought, um. From the individual property and our perspective, um. If, if I were, uh, someone who just spent a lot of money on new wealth in the last couple of years, uh, looking at it from that perspective. I too would probably not be crazy about having to, uh, undo it or, or incur additional costs. But it's my understanding that, uh, the law allows for grandfathering newer systems for up, for a period of up to ten years, so. For other people here can confirm that, which I think is a reasonable amount of time. So, um, again, looking at, looking at. Uh, you know, financial reasons, I mean, to me, that, that would be, uh, uh, an acco- an acceptable response from a financial perspective. If, if I were one of the people in this, in that perspect, in that situation.
Yes, just to touch on, on your point, we're not looking at centralized water, so everybody will be able to keep their water wells and things like that. Um, as to touch on what Brad was saying about the individuals who have recently, within the last five years or so installed new septic systems. That's where the, the grandfathering in happens, we do have a clause that if you had a new system within so many years. You have so many more years to continue to use that to get at least some of your money's worth out of it before you're required to tie into the centralized sewer. That's only for, for newly installed systems.
Once they decide to connect that cost would be solely on them. The connect.
The connection cost, um, that's what we were talking with Bill about, getting some of that, um. Full forgiveness, is that what you thought?
Well, there's a tap-in fee, and so in the big picture, the county is the sewer authority.
Correct.
And everyone that connects to your system, it would be this countywide, pays so much to tap in. And that's typically on the home element, that part. And those are things that I've seen other places where they do throw it on the tax roll, so you, you'll bank it out.
But they need a grinder pump, that would be on.
That, it, it all depends on what, what's there, but if they need a, a pump station or gravity. It depends on the location of the property, ideally, you want everything to work by gravity.
I don't think it's gonna be gravity.
So, um.
Last I checked, gravity doesn't go uphill.
No. But it all, it all, it's all dependent on the individual property and the actual location of the sanitary sewer. And then we work through that.
You have a little pressure, sewer systems, what we're looking at?
Well, I think at this time, we have what, ten, fourteen?
Well, we ask for a response in fourteen days, um, so look at it.
We have enough time to send it to our prosecutor for review. I'll make a motion, we send the contract to the prosecutor, this will be performed function. I'll second.
All favor, I. Uh, motion's carried.
Then once we get it back from them approved, we'll bring it up at our next meeting, once we have it back. If there's changes or comments, I guess we'll be in contact with you about that. And for one, he says, I guess.
Okay.
Anybody else have any further comments before we move on? Appreciate you for coming in and discussing.
Just thank you, you're fine.
You're free to stay, you're free to go, trust you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
All right. So at this time, we have Jennifer Burns, JFS Director, for PRC plan to go over.
Yes, every, um, two years, our PRC plan, which stands for the Prevention, Retention and Contingency Plan. Has to be reviewed and open for public comments. So this was taken to Family and Child First Council in August for review and any suggestions, um, I didn't really change much this year. Um, what we did was, under the one section where we would help with car payments, we had a, um, caveat in there that had to be. Had to have a threat of a repossession, we have removed that, because if it gets to the point of repossession. Those individuals are probably too far gone and even our help won't dig them out of the hole that they're in. So if they're, we just have to show, um, evidence that they're behind in their payments, doesn't have to be at the threat of a repossession. And we increased, um. Driver's edge from four hundred dollars to five hundred dollars, just because that's been increasing also. Um, and other than that, it was just minor language and grammar and something else. Those are the only changes this year.
So how many times can you help somebody out on a car that's gonna lose, is it just a one-time deal?
It kinda depends, we have a fifteen hundred dollar cap per year, so. If they use all fifteen hundred dollars at once, then they're done for a year. If they, I mean, three hundred here and then three hundred again in six months, they can do that, they have fifteen hundred dollars among all the different categories. So it could be the car repossession, it could be rent, it could be utilities, it can be spread out across different categories.
Is it PRC for the clothing program?
Yes, but the clothing program, we know that two hundred dollars doesn't count towards their fifteen hundred dollar cap. You can get that once a year.
And that's on a all-year long base?
All year round, yes.
And that would be two hundred dollars per child?
Yes.
All right, so at this time, I'm making a motion to accept the Prevention, Retention and Contingency. Plan that presented by Jennifer Burns, JFS Director.
Same root. I'll second.
Any other discussion on this? All favor, I. Uh, motion's carried.
Thank you.
Jennifer, can you discuss a little bit about what the housing jobs is doing? Right now, what, what's available for employers to do, uh, and job seekers?
Sure, we have a resource room that's available, we have public computers where anybody can come in and search online, apply online for positions. We keep our, um, job postings up to date about what's available in the county, so if you're looking for a job, we have them available. Help you out, we can, um, help create a resume for anybody that needs one updated or just doesn't even have one at all. Um, we also help with individuals that are trying to get unemployment, time of year where a lot of seasonal folks start getting laid off. So if they come in, they can also use our public computers for unemployment assistance. For employers, we can post jobs, um, we keep a Facebook page and we post any job openings on that. So if employers call us, we can post on there. We do have availability to have, um, space for open interviews, so. An employer didn't want to use their own space, we can offer that and have them there and give them room to do interviews. Um, and there's also some funding out there for individuals that wanna go to training if they're laid off or. Just as an adult and wanna improve their skills, we have some funding for eligible individuals to go to training for. Careers that are in demand.
And employees should probably come in and. Seek your resources rather than trying to create a resume using AI.
Yes.
Uh, cause I'm sure you've seen some dandy AI.
Yes.
Creating resumes as I have recently. It's a good resource, but it's not.
Right, not perfect.
Yeah, definitely need to review what you're doing.
Yes, good, have a human do that for you.
All right, thank you very much, anybody else have any questions for about resources over there? I don't think so.
Now, a lot does. We're almost done.
You have records commissioned at ten thirty.
Well, I guess we better wrap this up, so I can get to the next meeting, eh?
Well, I was gonna go into executive session. Um, make a motion, we're going to executive session for ORC one, two, one. G one, I think, uh, under hiring of a public employee. So. Second, Ron, I made a motion in the second second.
Make, make for a roll call.
Commissioner Madantki?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Leggett?
Yes. You want us just to go and do it with her?
I don't know, it might be easier.
Whatever you guys. Whatever you guys.
Eva's having a fit.
You guys wanna have to, um.
You say rolls in the kitchen?
I got this way. I think Eva's having a stroke.
Thank you for this.
They're just gonna go in here real quick.
Okay. Um, curse.
I'm gonna scream around here somewhere.
I can do this, yeah.
It has me chomping.
Try to rearrange some of those lines, or. Merle, you're coming with us.
Oh, I am.
All right, this one's off too.
All right, I'm gonna have you guys, I have to ask to unmute. Maybe it was the wrong computer. Did it work?
Yeah.
All right, get it handled. All right, um.
Yes.
You're unmuted.
Okay, can you hear us?
Yep, it is ten seventeen and we are back online.
All right, so ten seventeen, back out of the executive session.
Make a motion with the amount of the executive session, second.
All favor, I?
Aye.
Uh, motion's carried.
All right, so we've had, uh, Merle in April from our office, and I did some interviews for the Assistant Dog Pound. Uh, and I'd like to make a motion that we hire or promote Fon Alman from pound keeper to assistant dog warden effective immediately at a rate of fifteen dollars per hour. And also, uh, hire Stephanie Bennett at a rate of twelve seventy-five per hour as the pound keeper uh, in a part-time position effective immediately. Both of them will be on a six-month probationary period. Both of them will be eligible for up to fifty-seven increase at the end of the six-month probation period. It's in the form of a motion.
It's in the form of a motion, pound second.
Any other discussion? None. All favor, I?
Aye.
Uh, motion's carried.
Uh, Eva?
Yes.
Okay. Would you let the, uh, folks know that I'm gonna be a bit late to the next meeting, uh, but I'm on my way?
Yeah, I will.
All right, thank you.
I think, uh, I think Merle has something else he wants to discuss.
I just had two issues, um. With the increasing prices in gasoline and dog food, I propose raising our pound fees from seizure from fifteen dollars to twenty dollars. And then our boarding fee for, uh, housing and feeding from three dollars to five.
I'll make a motion to approve those increases as presented.
Second. Any other discussion on that? All favor, I?
Aye.
Uh, motion's carried.
And I would like this to be effective January first, that way it gives people enough.
All right, we'll move on with the.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Let me move on before we get to the clerk's report, so that I can get to the next one. Uh, so what I would like to bring up is I would like to move that we tabled the IT position. Uh, we had some good candidates and I appreciate the ones that came to, um, put in for the interview, uh, I think we had actually some really good candidates. Um, the issue is, I think it would be disingenuous to try and move forward at this point in time because it's gonna be an expensive proposition. And I would certainly not want to take anybody away from a, um, productive job that they have now. Uh, given the budget concerns that we have, but I don't want anybody to come for a short ride. So I think what I'd like to do is table the IT position for now, and I, uh, wanna send letters, uh, to those individuals so they're not hanging. So that's in the form of a motion.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Your, your concern is the property tax, not knowing what's gonna happen with it.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I was at a recent meeting in Columbus where it was looking more and more likely that could make it to the ballot. And, uh, these people all have good jobs. Uh, as I said earlier, it'd be disingenuous of me to try and bring them people on. And then if we end up in a budget crunch, I don't want to be responsible for them, then I'll have these two, uh, go back to the job market again.
All right, all favor, I?
Aye.
Uh, motion's carried.
At this point in time, I'm going to, uh, move on so I can get to the to the next, uh, board meeting.
All right.
Um, Eva, how many more, um, how many more bids did you get?
Just one.
Okay, so we have three total.
Three total.
Mm-hmm, and I'll read these two and then Eva will go ahead and open that one and read hers, and then we're gonna table them till Thursday.
All right, so now WPCLF two thousand twenty-two dash eleven bid opening?
Mm-hmm. So the first one that I have is from Streamline Excavating LLC from Malburn.
Hang on a second, maybe you better come over here and gamble with you.
Yeah.
Okay.
You had a rose between two thorns.
Look at that. See how I feel being a commissioner here?
No.
Sitting between you. All right, so Streamline Excavating LLC, this, they are from Malburn. This is for the install of one septic system. Their bid is twenty-nine thousand nine hundred sixty dollars and one cent. Two nine nine six zero and one cent.
One cent.
One cent. Um, my second one is from Manzoni Excavating. I'll double check, I believe they're from East Sparta. Holy, these looks. Yes, they are from East, East Sparta, Manzoni Excavating. And. See, actually, this one there. Well, it appears that their bid is thirty-one thousand forty-one dollars and thirty cents. Three one zero four one and three oh cents. And then what do you have, Eva?
I have John Stewart Excavating LLC from Chattis. It looks like his is twenty-five thousand two hundred dollars and zero cents.
All right, so we'll just table those till Thursday.
Yes, right, motion to table the business for further review Thursday, October second, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
All favor, I?
Aye.
Uh, motion's carried. All right, we're gonna do a clerk's report today.
Yes, I have one thing. I would just like to let viewers know that Community Christmas twenty twenty-five will be taking applications at the Friendship Center located at one hundred Kensington Road, Northeast Carrollton. The dates for applications are October seventh and fourteenth from one PM to three PM, and October ninth and October sixteenth from four PM to six PM. Babies through all school-aged students that meet the requirements are eligible. A list of the requirements along with more information has been shared to the Commissioner's Facebook page, and that's all I have.
All right, thanks Eva. You have any questions for Eva, Tom?
No.
No. Mr. McGaranty, you have anything for the board today?
Uh, tomorrow, I believe you and maybe Bob are going to, uh, multi-county, but I'm unable to go because I will be helping host a stepping up webinar, uh, dealing with mental health and uh, drug abuse, um, for our court system and our, uh, jail. Um, so that's what I'll be doing tomorrow, um. Also, I'd like to give some praise to our scarecrow decorators. They, uh, they did a good job putting a scarecrow up in front of the courthouse to represent our office, and since Bob left early, I'll say he looks kinda like Bob.
You're gonna be in so much trouble.
That'll be half the day.
That's it.
Uh, the other thing I have for the board is, uh, on Thursday, I got some handouts gonna give to, uh, Commissioner Walker, Commissioner McGaranty. Our annex building, second stage, has needed an answer on heating and cooling and the electrical side of it, um. I got some, um, papers I'm gonna hand out to you to review. And then on Thursday, um, gonna have to pick which way we wanna go with that and make a vote on it, so everybody over there knows what's going on for the proceeding with heating and cooling or the electrical side of it, so at this time, that's all I have for the board today.
Well, there's nothing else, I'm making a motion wager.
I'll second it. All favor, I?